Good morning, good morning everyone. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Birmingham City Council. We're gonna have our invocation by Counselor Woods this morning and the pledge of allegiance by Council President Protem Wardine Alexander. If everyone could please stand.
By your heads. Dear Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you today and serve. Lord, we just ask that you give us a focus and an understanding, Lord. We ask that the things that are going on nationally, that we be allowed and be focused to maximize on this moment, Lord, that we create real change moving forward that betters lives and creates equity for everyone, Lord. We just ask that you continue to push and continue to expose during this season. A lot of things are being exposed, Lord. We just ask that you continue to cover us, Lord, as we make our decisions, Lord. Cover the city. We ask that you protect every person living here, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
And then, fill up the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is in hand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Clark. How are you?
Morning, sir.
Good morning, good morning. If you could, call roll, please.
Yes, sir. Council President Protem Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Good morning, Councilmember Hilliard. Councilmember Hoyt.
President.
Councilmember O'Quinn. Councilmember Smithman. Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Abbott. President Parker.
Good morning. All right, thank you all. All right, the minutes are not ready, February 4th through June 2nd, 2020. We're gonna call on Counselor Smithman real quick and Counselor Wardine Alexander. Council President Wardine Alexander. Good morning, Counselor Smithman. How are you?
Good morning, thank you. We had the unfortunate event of Judge Boo Hacker dying on Sunday. He was a pillar in the law community. He served as presiding judge in the Jefferson County Court Civil Circuit Division for many years. He just retired less than three months ago. And so, I wanted to ask the council to pass a resolution of sympathy. His funeral is actually going on right now. So, I will hopefully be able to have someone from his family, his son, or his wife to come up and accept the resolution.
Just need you to make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Not yet.
Some of...
It was, uh, motion was made by Counselor Smithman, Counselor Parker.
Oh, Counselor Parker.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
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 Thank you all.
Okay, all righty, thank you. President Protem Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. This morning, I would like to offer a resolution of sympathy in honor of Mr. Walter Alexander. Mr. Alexander was a longtime resident of District 7. He lived in the Sand Ridge-Ox Valley neighborhood for a number of years. He also served as the president of that neighborhood association and was a member of the citizens' advisory. He was such a strong influence in the Sand Ridge-Ox Valley area, as well as into the city of Birmingham. So, at this time, I would like to offer a resolution of sympathy in his honor.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And now move the item, please.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you all very much. And we do lift his wife, Mrs. Mamie Alexander, and family in prayer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Real quick, I'm trying to see, do we have those, um, addendum items? Are they ready, or?
No, sir.
Okay.
They're in process.
Okay, all right. So, we will ask the mayor to, um...
No, sir.
Good morning, sir. How you doing? Good. While he's, while the mayor's coming up, we, and the...
No, sir, not yet. We're waiting on that.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning to the entire council. Although we know there are many things going on in our community and country, such as the global pandemic, coronavirus, the economic crisis that's hitting our city, our businesses, and our city budget. In addition to that, warranted civil unrest due to the death of George Floyd. This weekend was still tough locally for our city. And I am speaking about Larry Petway and Brenda Lee Jordan. Larry Petway is a gentleman at age 70, retired from the military, Marine, walking from his, walked to, from his home to a convenience store in proximity of his home, walking back home from that convenience store, struck by a stray bullet that was not meant for him Less than 24 hours later, there was Brenda Lee Jordan, a mother, who was riding in a car on her way to the store, was also struck by a bullet. Larry Petway and Brenda Lee Jordan were killed. In my opinion, they were killed by cowards. My message is pretty direct this morning. If you're reckless and cowardly enough to shoot at people, you should be mad enough to turn yourself in. But I'm also calling on the community, a lot of different street codes that exist out here. And I believe one of those codes needs to be this. No one should be dying from gun violence in our community at all. But I think the same outrage, I think the same anger and the same, all the other feelings you have when an innocent child is killed in Birmingham. I think you should have the same outrage and same anger and same hurt for our senior citizens as well. Truth is, I talked to Larry Petway's son. He won't get a chance to celebrate Father's Day with his father. Ms. Brenda Lee Jordan usually spends Father's Day with her son and daughter-in-law. Expressing our condolences is not enough. Now, in every crime category, rape, burglary, robbery, breaking and entering vehicles, theft, and every other crime category, the crime significantly down. As it relates to homicides, they're not up. They're flat, meaning right around the same time, we were, June 8th of last year, I believe there were 45 homicides of 19. And 43 at the same time, June 8th of 2020. That is still unacceptable. There's nothing to celebrate. But when you peel back and you dig into what's happening in some of these homicides, you realize that there's so much personal beef between people who resolve themselves to settling whatever issues they have by picking up guns. That's the stupid part about it is, based on even what you see here with Larry Petway and Brenda Lee Jordan, clearly, they can't even shoot. There's so many other things I want to say, but in the interest of time, I thought it was important to publicly acknowledge Larry Petway and Brenda Lee Jordan were part of our community. Larry Petway and Brenda Lee Jordan were people who had families. Larry Petway and Brenda Lee Jordan have to be laid to rest this week as innocent people whose lives were snatched for them for no reason, but for reckless behavior among people who don't know how to settle their issues. And so, to the streets of Birmingham, where they at, and everybody else who understands the underground movement in this city. If you know about any of these two people that were killed innocently, innocent victims, people who deserve to be here with us today, I'm asking that you call BPD homicide unit at (205) 254-1764. Again, that's (205) 254-1764. Or Crime Stoppers at (205) 254-7777. And, Mr. President and council, just a note to close this out as it relates to these two innocent victims, Larry Petway and Brenda Lee Jordan. I imagine the shooter, he or she, one of their family members were killed in our city. They would be jumping up and down demanding that the city of Birmingham and Birmingham Police Department do something about bringing justice to their family. We need people to remember that. We ask that you do the same in this case, because Larry Petway and Brenda Lee Jordan did not deserve what happened to them. On another note, another topic, I want to thank our police department and its employees for their service. They're here to protect and serve, and they do it at a national accredited agency, Birmingham Police Department. In fact, BPD is one of 12 law enforcement agencies in the state of Alabama, of our 12 out of 139 cities, and the only one in Jefferson County with a national accreditation from the Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies, also known as CALEA. In an ongoing effort to expand our accountability and transparency, I will soon share a closer look at the process and procedures at BPD, including training and disciplinary actions for officers, adjustments with Internal Affairs, and more. I've appreciated walking alongside this council, having, as recently as yesterday, talked with Council President and extensive conversation with Hunter Williams, Chair of the Public Safety Committee. And we will be continuing our conversations this week prior to any public meetings. Mr. President and council, there's another note, different topic. As an employee for eight years, I had a chance to walk alongside a lot of different employees in the city of Birmingham. One such employee, whose name I will leave, I won't share the name, spoke to the idea many, many years ago about the importance of the city of Birmingham actually having a sick bank, a sick leave bank, meaning all of our employees have a certain number of hours they obtain every year, certain number of hours they obtain every year as it relates to either sick leave or vacation leave. And whether it's that actual employee, their spouse, child, or some extended family member that they're responsible for, when they max out of their sick leave, unfortunately, they have to start using leave without pay. And I think it's important as employees, we say we are a family, we say we put people first, I believe that also means putting our employees first. And so, I'm pleased to report that on July 1, we will roll out a sick leave bank and a vacation bank for city employees. This initiative has been one that I've been working on for a while, because I know how important it is for employees to feel secure when they are faced with a significant illness or are fighting a life-threatening disease. The initial enrollment bank for both banks will be June 22nd through 30th, 2020. Again, the initial enrollment period will be the last week of this month. This morning, I have HR Director Jim Madzick here, if there are any questions on this new initiative. In addition to that, for more information, employees may visit birminghamal.gov/leavebank. At a high level, it simply means this, if you run out of hours, there's a bank you can tap into to draw down on if you need some additional leave time because of illness. Last note, Mr. President and council, and it goes to, um, something Counselor Crystal Smithman did this morning. I also want to express my heartfelt thoughts for the Boo Hacker family over the loss of their patriarch, former Jefferson County Circuit Judge Joseph Boo Hacker. Spoke to his wife Sunday, as well as yesterday, and I shared with her my interaction with the judge, not only as a lawyer, but I got caught up in jury duty one time. Judge Boo Hacker passed on June 7 after an extended illness, and he was 66 years of age. He served nearly 20 years' career on the bench, including working for more than four years as presiding judge over our 10th Judiciary Circuit, and he retired in February. And as it relates to our entire legal community here in Jefferson County, we lost a giant. And I want to acknowledge the many amazing, good things he did on behalf of the residents and citizens of Birmingham and Jefferson County. Mr. President, that concludes my report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Williams?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your comments this morning. I thought that your comments about Mr. Petway, who died on our city's west side, and Ms. Jordan, who died in the Eastlake community, were very apt right now. I believe you used the word senseless, if not, you alluded to it, because it was extremely senseless in the fact that this man and this woman were going about their daily routine. They were not involved, not that it's ever okay for a homicide to occur, but they were not involved in any type of transactional or domestic dispute that might lead them to becoming a victim of crime. Ms. Johnson was simply driving through her neighborhood on the way to the grocery store. I think I've heard a lot from the Eastlake community about specifically Ms. Johnson's death, because, I mean, Ms. Jordan's death, because about where it occurred. And I think that there has been a new cry-out and a new request for, by many members, for additional police patrols in that area, specifically around that area of Eastlake, for a lot of the longtime residents. Some of them were in my district, some of them were probably in Oaklands and Parker's district that reached out. But I think that entire community saw that when Ms. Jordan, you know, a regular neighborhood member, just go into the grocery store, shot innocently, it's, um, it's something that the entire community, both, you know, it stops the entire community in their tracks. So, I just wanted to thank you for bringing that up and also relay all of the emails that I have gotten from members of, of, of the community, that I think they're in all three of our respective districts.
Okay, we're gonna go this way. Counselor Woods, you're, you're carrying. Counselor Smithman, we'll just work our way back around.
Thank you, Counsel Parker. I feel compelled to speak, because the death of Mr. Petway happened in my district. And it saddens me today, because the conscious disregard for life is just so wrong and amazing. It, it's just, I just can't believe the number of homicides that have gone up in District 6 this past year. So, I'm asking personally, the community to help us out. And also, I think for my district, for my office in particular, we need to redirect how we resolve these type of crimes, like putting money towards Crime Stoppers, partnering with Faith and Action, really going back into the community and seeing what's going on, why is this happening? We had a three-year-old girl to be hit and killed on Sunday. I can't even imagine, she hasn't even started life yet, and she's been killed. I mean, there's, there's something that we have to do. And, you know, I'm going to pledge to make sure that I go into my community and make sure to see and ask them, what are the things that we can do? Can you guys help me out? Can you help out Mayor Woodfin? So, you know, I'm just gonna pray for the safety of my district, and I'm deeply regarded for the other deaths that are happening. But for my district, I really want to look into alternative ways to combat crime. So, thank you, Mayor Woodfin, for your words. I really appreciate it. And thank you, Counsel Parker.
Yes, ma'am. President Protem Alexander. And we'll just work on around.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mayor Woodfin. And thank my councilmembers. I think we all have our own personal feelings about what is going on in our community, what is being asked of us as councilmembers. I just want to share some numbers with you. The number 166, that's the number of shooting victims that have occurred in this city in 2020. I want to share with you the number one. On February 4th, I became a member of a sisterhood that I didn't want to become a member of. And my child became a member of that number 166. So, I woke up this morning, and I had 248 emails. 248 emails asking me, in my role, to take a stance and take action. I'm asking each of you in the city of Birmingham to become a part of the solution. We've used the terms lawlessness, senselessness. How senseless is it for you to come home, to be with friends, and you to be attacked and shot and left, left to die? And you ask me, what can I do? I'm asking you, what can you do as individuals to have a moral perpetuity, to respect the life of others, respect your community, respect those in authority, respect this city? We have a history, a history of protest, a history of change. We've gone about it, and we've done it well. And we've been successful as a city. Look at this chamber. Look at this mayor. Look at the makeup of this council. Look at this city. Don't let it all go for waste. Let's work together. I'll work with you, Counselor Smithman. I'll walk the streets of 7. I'll walk the streets of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 8, and 9, if it means that we can bring this to an end. Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't know he was gone. Yes, Mr. Hilliard.
Thank you, Madam Protem. I don't know what my mic is on, testing, testing. Testing. Testing, absolutely. Thank you, Madam Protem. We're in some interesting times. I don't think in any of our wildest dreams, we could have imagined a pandemic. I don't think any of us ever in our wildest dream thought of a time that black and whites would be wearing masks. If a black man had walked into a department store, or a restaurant, or 7-Eleven with a mask on like this, Counselor Hoyt, I think it just all hell would have broke loose. So, you know, God is teaching us and putting us in situations where we have to take in and into conception ourselves, and we have to think about one another. See, this invisible enemy we're dealing with doesn't know race, creed, or color, but yes, it does bring out things that we should have been dealing with a long time ago. Why is it that African-Americans and black people are so, are so highly affected by this disease? It is something that has been left unattended for the last 400 years, absolutely. So, within that, we have a chance, as a new generation, to join together as black and whites and all races from around the world to make a difference. I believe that it could bring out the best in Americans to change things and make a difference. We have been given a great opportunity in this era to make a difference. As I stand here with all of my colleagues and say to you that, yes, God has chosen us for this particular time and moment to help join with our community, to make a difference, to protect our elders, to look out for the minds of our young people, and to solve problems that have been plaguing us for years. America, will we drop this opportunity to make a difference? You know, I think about it. At 59 years old, I remember my first march, I believe, was, Counselor Woods, was a march that Abraham Wiltz called, when I was in high school. I think it was the Benita Carter March, if I can't recite. I believe that was the first one I remember. Then, I remember Forside Georgia with Oprah Winfrey, getting on the bus, going down. I'd never seen Ku Klux Klan's before. First time I've ever laid eyes on anybody in a hood. It was frightening to see that sight and to be reminded of what my ancestors saw and what they dealt with, and to hear the language and the voice. But then, to next of 10, the Million Man March in Washington, DC, to see a flow of African-American men stand up for a change. And then later, to go to the cities, to the city of Birmingham and walk the streets when they tried to take Dr. Arrington off to prison, on the front line doing that area. And then marching in Montgomery, Alabama, in remembrance of the Rosa Parks Museum. And then down in New Orleans for education. I said all of this to tell you, I'm 59 years old, and we've been marching for how long? For a long, long time. I don't want to see the next generation out on issues that we should have solved this time around. Now is the time to solve the issues of racism. Now is the time for us to come together. We need each and every one of you to help make a difference and just not let this die out. So, here it is. We'll be marching again, my grandsons, who's seven. When he's 57, will he have a line of marches like his grandfather had? I say to you, it's your responsibility, just as it is ours. We need all of you. To the media, we love you, we need you. To my colleagues, we love you, we need you. To the constituents of Birmingham, we love you and we need you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Hilliard, Dr. O'Quinn.
Yes, I have a lot of thoughts I could share, but I just want to express my condolences to the family of Ms. Jordan and Mr. Petway, and to all the victims of violent crime in our city, and in the past, past and present. So, the incident on First Avenue North in Southeast Lake, or East Lake proper, Oklahoma, that was in my district, and for the residents of that area, anyone who's been through that area, you are probably abundantly aware that there are longstanding issues along that First Avenue corridor from Woodlawn to Eastlake. So, unfortunately, you know, I feel like this is a consequence of, of that situation. So, again, condolences to the families of Ms. Jordan and Mr. Petway. May God be with you.
Counselor Abbott, Counselor Hoyt.
Counselor Wood.
Okay. Counselor Abbott, let you close it out, Counselor Howard.
I would like to be able to say that I don't have anything to say. But I have a whole lot to say, that I'm not going to say. My condolences go to the families of Ms. Jordan and Mr. Petway. And I guess the one thing I would say is that this, these problems are problems for all of us to solve. You can't just hide away at your house and duck and dodge and say it's in somebody else's neighborhood, so I don't care. All of us have to work together to try to deal with these problems. My next-door neighbor may not be shooting the neighborhood up, but somebody else has a neighbor who is. And if we see something, we need to say something, people need to get involved rather than just hunkering down like we have during this coronavirus and waiting for... hunkering down like we have during this coronavirus and, uh, waiting for things to go away. They're not going to go away if we just lay low and wait, I don't believe. Because it seems like every young person has got a gun in his pocket, or her pocket, maybe in her purse. If I had a gun in my pocket, I might have a tendency to shoot somebody if I got mad. You know, it just is so insane that everybody has to have a gun in order to feel comfortable. That's wrong too. So, I guess my only comment is we need to take care of each other and we need to all see that it's our responsibility to do something. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Counselor Hoyt. Counselor Woods wanted to say something, did you want to close it out?
That's fine.
Good Reverend Doctor closes out. Counselor Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, like I said, there's a lot going on in a short period of time here locally. I think we definitely have to get to a point where, uh, you know, the community is, is, is not accepting this and, you know, you're going to have to start, uh, sharing information about who's committing these crimes. Uh, you know, there, you got basically innocent people getting caught in the crossfire. But I want to hit on something, like I said, nationally, we, we see a lot going on. I've, I've had a lot of conversations over the last couple of weeks and, and we're at a point where basically overt racism is, is no longer acceptable, is no longer politically correct. It's called out at any level. And so I think we have to begin to, to turn our attention and really focus on carrying that momentum to really attack, um, covert racism, systematic racism, and start coming up with solutions to, to dismantle some of those things that, you know, is, is really hard to pinpoint exactly how. And some of these things are difficult because they're, uh, people really need to have a clear enemy. And so systematic racism is not a person, it's, it's systems, it's, uh, methods of doing things. And so we have to begin to, to really begin to work together to dismantle some of these things. And so, um, you know, I'll be working through the, uh, Government Affairs and, and Public Information Committee. And I don't know if the mayor stepped out or not, but I would like to, uh, to work with his, uh, Office of Social Justice and, uh, Racial Equity, begin to see what we can do in Birmingham specifically, uh, to, to really close the gap on some of these disparities locally. You know, we're talking about economic opportunity, we're talking about the small business communities, the opportunities there. Um, you know, whether it's the financial space, whether it's HR department, whatever that looks like. Uh, I think we have to, uh, to, to really jump to the front of the line and address it. Like I said, I think we're at a point where you've got to start having this conversation. And so we're finally, finally at a point where just certain stuff is not accepted anymore. There are certain things that people will say about people because of the color of their skin that publicly, that, that now is no longer acceptable. And so I think now we really have to continue that push to actually, uh, change lives, change outlooks, and change the trajectory, uh, for people regardless of where you were born, whatever zip code you're born into. Uh, we have to kind of make sure that you're, if you get a public education, it's the same quality regardless of where that education has gotten. And so we've got to start to look at these systems. And so it, it's not a clear-cut enemy, you know, but, you know, the proof is there in the results. And so when we look at the, you know, the quality of education, we look at the wealth gap, the income gap, you know, all of those things are a result of us, of systems. And so we have to begin to, uh, dismantle them. And I think, um, you know, I really appreciate my colleagues because I've had conversations with, uh, pretty much all of them. And, and everybody is, is understanding and focused on beginning to attack some of those problems. And so we, um, I think the city of Birmingham has to continue to lead. I think we've got, uh, an administration that, that wants to achieve this too. And so I think we need to all get together and make this happen. But I, um, like I said, I, I want to get with the mayor's office if they're, uh, willing to work with us via the, the Office of Social Justice and Racial Equity. But I think we've got to be aggressive here in our city and, and, uh, identifying certain systems that are in place and beginning to dismantle them. And so I, I wanted to, uh, to speak to that today and, uh, I appreciate that, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Counselor Hoyt?
Yes, I, um, did too, all the comments that I've heard from my colleagues and certainly wanted to express my condolences to the Petway and Jordan family. I just remember getting the call Saturday night as I was preparing for church from Counselor Tyson, Commissioner Tyson, and expressing her discontent about, um, what had happened to her relative, uh, Ms. Jordan. And she was upset, she was crying. And she says to me that Hoyt just got to stop. And it does. But I also know that when you talk about institutions and institution systematic racism, you got to deal with the whole, just can't talk about folk killing each other. Let's talk about persons, uh, not having access to capital. Our communities are blighted because we don't have access to loan opportunities. Our educational system continues to struggle. Because when you look at the Birmingham school system and look at the, the demographics of the school system, it's more segregated than it was in the sixties. And it's unacceptable. And we have, uh, supposedly partners in education who say, we here to help, but ain't nothing changed. Nothing has changed. And, you know, we operate in a city that, um, doesn't see the need to, to implement a disparity study. Because it starts here too. I, I don't know anybody who doesn't want to have a job providing for their families and themselves. And I think if we did that, challenge our corporate community, some of these entry-level jobs should be going to, uh, to black and brown people. But that doesn't happen. I imagine you got three generations of persons who are working for some of these corporations, but, but rarely would you find an African-American, uh, uh, three generations of persons working, uh, for any of these organizations. And so it's so systemic that it's second nature, uh, for persons to continue, um, this injustice. And so, I'm concerned that nothing's going to change until we change. You know, we have to be leaders. And we know the issues of our community. We could start with gun control. We got state legislators who don't see the need to control guns. And we think this is, you know, the Wild, Wild West. You know, um, and I'm just, uh, concerned that we're not funding, um, agencies that could help us in the community, provide services for, uh, persons, uh, in our community. Unemployment among black and brown folk is at a all-time high. And it's gotten worse with the pandemic. So, uh, unless we, um, willing to make some real changes, all this, what we talking about is air. It's simply air. Because if you want to do better by people, you have to intentionally do better by people. And let me just say this here. This is a racism. You know, when you say you don't like another race, then you saying that you don't like what God has done. Because God is the creator of all of us. So you got a problem with God. Because ain't nothing I can do to change my color. Ain't nothing none of you can do to change your color. But there is something you can do to forge relationship and mutual respect and appreciation for each other's culture and ethnicities and all of these things. Those are opportunities. And it just saddens me. What I saw that happened to George Floyd and these other folks that we've been in the news, the man was lifeless. The man had to hold his neck up just to get him into the, the, what you call it, a girdy? Gurney, whatever you call it? And every last one should have been outraged because that's a human. What divides us is the fact we get caught up in religion, we get caught up in, and, um, and, um, parties, we get caught up in economics, all this other stuff. But what should unite us is the fact that we all are human. And when you see something done like that, in heart, in heart, in, uh, in humane to humanity, that's a problem. That's a problem for America. And so I said to my folks Sunday that America been living a lie. Been living a lie because Thomas Jefferson says all men were created equal. And then he said, it, it is self-evidence. Well, what's self-evident is that we're not there yet.
Yes, sir, brother. Yes, sir.
We are not there yet.
Yes, sir.
And every time I turn the TV, I see a lie. When folks say that, uh, things are better, it's not better. It's just the fact that we got these right here. And it's happening over and over again. You would think at the height of this protest and movement, that we wouldn't have no more of these. But every week, if not every other day, somebody produces what? A, 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 a camera showing the brutality of, uh, of African-American and, 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 uh, and folk. Uh, and even this elderly man. Who in the hell would push a, a seventy-five-year-old man? Already frail. You could see that. My heart wrenches. But it ain't going, listen, when it changes is when we become intentional in terms of how we go from here. There needs to be a demand from this corporate America, these folk round here, the Alabama Powers, the Regions Bank, the, the, uh, Wells Fargo and all these folk. We need jobs. We need y'all to make some loan in the black community. We shouldn't have to beg for a grocery store to come to the black community. And you look, you know, it look like we are, that ought to be our priority. Why is it that the black community is always in a desert? And then you could have two grocery stores within, uh, eighth of a mile in white communities? And we can't find one for ten miles? Or twenty in some cases? We, we got the, it's air. It's air because we, you know, every time I think we, we making some strides and what have you. And, and let me say this, and I'm going to be through, Mr. President. I have no problem in taking down a Confederate statue. But if we, if we're not changing the heart of the people, what good is it? I understand, symbolically, it needs to be removed. But what are we going to do for one another? You know? And I heard, heard this, this, um, white minister said, she said, who in here white would want to be treated like black folk? So, she said, did you hear me? Who in here white would want to be treated like black folk? What you have seen. And you know what the answer was? Nobody stood up, nobody raised their hand. Because nobody would want to be treated that the way that we've been treated for four hundred years. We didn't, it didn't start there. And listen, the institution wasn't designed for us either, to make it. You know, we, we, we raise concerns about burning buildings. Well, in the four hundred years, they burned bodies. Have y'all forgotten about that? Burn them in front of their children, their families. Less we forget. I'm done.
Counselor Parker?
Yes, ma'am.
I have, um, I forgot, the neighborhood asked me to request the mayor's office for speed bumps for what happened to Ms. Lopez. That's the twelve-hundred block of Fifteenth Street Southwest. But I know he's not in here, but I know they wanted me to request that after I received several phone calls yesterday.
Okay, all right. Thank you, uh, Counselor Smithler. Let's, um, let's go through the consent agenda. Real quick, Madam Clark.
Okay, the consent agenda, it starts on page two, with items three, four, and five. Let's go over to page... Fifteen, you have items six, seven, and eight. Page sixteen, items nine, ten, and eleven. Page seventeen, items twelve and thirteen. Item eighteen, items fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. And I believe you got a, an amended or revised copy of the agreement that goes along with item number sixteen. Page nineteen, it's items nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. Page twenty, items twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. Page twenty-one, items twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty. Page twenty-two, items thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five. Page twenty-three, items thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty. Page twenty-four, items forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five. Page twenty-five, items forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty. Page twenty-six, items fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, and fifty-four. Page twenty-seven, items fifty-five and fifty-six. And that completes the consent agenda.
Okay, we've got a couple of addendums as well. Dr. Quinn, you want to start off and we'll work our way around?
Yes, sir. Thank you, President Parker. There are no objections on page twenty-seven. I would like to add item fifty-seven, um, to the consent agenda. And also, uh, in the addenda, um, items sixty and sixty-one.
Excuse me, Counselor, we normally on item number fifty-seven, we normally read those because that's setting a hearing so that the public can know.
Okay, I'm sorry, Dr. Quinn.
So, um, disregard number fifty-seven, but, um, I think if there are no objections, item sixty and sixty-one on the addendum.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
Request those for consent.
Okay, that's fine. As we're going through the agenda, um, I know there's a lot of, uh, people, either outside or inside. We're trying to work through that. We hear you. So at the appropriate time, we, um, we're going to get through the consent agenda and we're going to ask, um, for three individuals to speak as we, this time, uh, three minutes each. Uh, as we move forward, we will, we will get back to our normal, uh, order of having public speakers. We, we're still operating in the COVID-nineteen, but, um, but just wanted to let you know, we've been... been working through that. So, uh, after we do the agenda, recognize three speakers from the public, three minutes each. And as you see on the agenda, we are starting now to start doing public hearings. That, we're setting them for later in the month, so we're working through how do we operate in our new normal. So, um, so we'll work together, but, uh, just wanted to let you know, we'll get through the, the public, get through our consent agenda, uh, suspend this rules for three speakers and then we'll go from there. So I just wanted to kinda let you know.
Mr. President? Uh, in the meantime, um, can Public Safety provide us the, um, the, the form for these two items, one and two?
Okay.
I didn't see the attachment, and so I need to see it.
Okay, if...
I'm just saying that so he can go ahead and get it when you let the folks speak.
Hey, Mr. Hoyt, what specific forms, since there's so many, are you referring to?
I'm saying on item one and two.
I understand that. Which forms would you like to see?
The neighborhood meeting, the, uh, that transpired and the recommendation and all that.
Okay. Is, it, can I, can I, will you be okay with me letting you know that the neighborhood unanimously voted against it?
I wanna see it.
Okay.
And I, and I would ask that it would accompany the item itself. Uh, I've noticed that, you know, hadn't been doing that, so we need to go back to doing that because I'd like to see it.
Counsel Hilliard, you good on the, the agenda? Okay, President Protem?
I'm good on it, thank you.
Okay.
Um, can we add, I, so item fourteen did go through Public Safety. I know it says here submitted by the mayor's office for first reading, but it did go through public safety, so it should have been submitted to that. So does that still need to be read aloud? Okay. Then I'm good.
Okay, Counsel Abbott?
Uh, just one little tiny thing on item three. Did El Soul nightclub change the spelling of their name or is this supposed to be L as in E.L. instead of just an L? Because it used to be El Soul like E.L. Soul. So it may just be a typo, but unless they changed the way they spell their name. Yeah, they've been around since the beginning of the earth.
Okay.
Excuse me, Counsel Abbott? On the application, they just have the letter L.
Really?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I don't think that's their real name. They changed it. Okay.
Okay. All right, so Counsel Hoyt, anything else you wanna have before we...
Can I ask, Madam Clark, do you happen to have the neighborhood form as part of the application for items one and two?
Yes, I have.
Is it, do you mind if you just pass it over so we can expedite that?
Okay, are y'all good? Counsel Hoyt? Okay. All right, let's move on the, uh, let's, let's move on to the, uh, everybody's good on consent agenda? All right, all items designated as consent are routine and uncontroversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such item or items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read, all other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Uh, that one we would have to take up. Item sixty-two is not on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve is read.
Tracking.
Ready for a vote?
Okay, hold on one second. And that was Counselor Williams? All right. President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor Hilliard?
Aye.
Counselor Hoyt? Counselor O'Quinn?
Aye.
Counselor Schmiderman?
Aye.
Counselor Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Woods?
Yes.
Counselor Abbott?
Aye.
And President Parker?
Aye. Okay, the consent agenda, uh, is approved. First item, Madam Clark.
Okay, the first item will be on page two, and that's item number one. A resolution relative to the application of Black One-Stop Shop LLC for an off-premise beer and wine license to be used at Circle B One-Stop, fifteen fifty-seven Bessemer Road, and it should be Suite 101, Birmingham, in the hearing of our interested parties.
Counsel Williams?
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Um, is the applicant here today for Circle B One-Stop? I realize that... Hey, how are you doing? If you're doing well, if you don't mind stating your name and address right here and, in that microphone for the record, and, um, and then exactly what you are doing.
Uh, Tammy Adams, and the address is one five five seven Bessemer Road, and it is Black One-Stop Shop.
And then, and then this, Ms. Adams, this is, uh, from what I recall from Public Safety, this is a, um, existing, uh, business that you have acquired, is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir. It was, um, a convenience store service station before we got the building. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. It was a convenience store service station before we acquired it.
Okay, thank you. Um, is, is there anybody that wishes to speak for or against this item? Counselors, do you have any questions for Ms. Adams? Ms. Adams, would you like to, have I failed to mention anything that you'd like for the council to know?
Well, we did a lot of work there. We just like to get open, whatever we could get, whatever part of it we can get open, the convenience store, gas station, uh, the liquor store, it's just a liquor store, it's not a lounge, it was presented as a lounge, but it's not a lounge. Uh, and we, I did the research on it, haven't had any before we got it. I think they had one incident, but it wasn't at the convenience store service station. It was somewhere else, and I think somebody ended up there, you know, coming there from wherever it was. But we just like to get it open if we can.
Well, thank you, Ms. Adams. I appreciate you being here, um, again. You were just so very nice. She was, uh, there for Public Safety, represented, um, her investment very well, and she's here again today, so I appreciate all your time in front of us. I know that no one really wants to be in front of the council, um, for two times in a row, right? So thank you for being here. Uh, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you all for having me.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, we're ready, uh, for a vote on item one. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Yeah.
Ms. Adams, hold on.
No, it was not for Ms. Adams, I just wanted to know why there's no recommendation from the Public Safety Committee? Is there a problem or...
So it, the reason that we didn't send a yes recommendation is because the neighborhood voted against it, um, because I believe the exact form said, and I will read it, uh, this applicant attended the Central Park Neighborhood Association on March the twelfth of twenty twenty fourteen, opposed in zero support. The reason that they opposed is this is not the type of business that the neighborhood desires to come to the community, something that would serve children more, um, is the remarks that were made. Of course, this is not a new business, this is an existing business.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And that's why I think it's important for us to read it, to get, so that the public knows what the comments are, the, of the neighborhood. Now, you know, the final decision's gonna be made by the council. But we have a proliferation of these, uh, kind of establishment, um, along Third Avenue, even though it may be an existing business, uh, nothing, and I'll also, we have to give anything, uh, it's a privilege, quite frankly. And, um, and I'm just, you know, um, I'm not inclined to vote for it, uh, but my colleagues do whatever you need to do, but I'm just here to tell you, I get tired of this. You know? We can get these, but we can't get a grocery store, we can't get a department store, we can't get the stuff that we need in our community because nobody cares. You know? And so it just, it is what it is. But, you know, I have a, a different regard for the community than just the normal. So, but I would ask, Mr. President, that, um, going forward, that we read these, uh... No, it's fine.
Oh.
Read these, uh...
Stephen.
Thank you, you're so kind.
I have a collection.
That we read these, uh, neighborhood, uh, form, yeah, that's fine.
We'll come back.
I'm done.
Oh, you dropped it on, we'll, we'll give you a second. Counsel Hoyt, we'll come back to you. We'll give you a second. Uh, any other speakers on, on, uh, this item? Everybody's good? Okay. All right, we're just gonna hold up momentarily.
Hold on, there was a member of the public that, ma'am, you wish to speak on this item?
No, she's... No.
You wish to speak on this item?
She doesn't know what we're doing.
No, no, the...
I guess if you don't know, you probably don't. All right.
Okay. All right, that's, uh, all right, that's fine. We're gonna give, uh, Counsel Hoyt just a moment and, uh, we'll go back and recognize him.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
While we're waiting. I believe I heard the applicant say that there had been no incidents at this location, except maybe one where the person went to the location. Is that, like... Since they've had it? But historically, do we have the history? I mean, we used to have a detective that came and told us about the number of incidents that had occurred and the time span.
So our, our detective that is assigned to Public Safety said that there were no incidents.
Okay, no incidents.
Now, I don't know how far...
Okay.
That was the comment. I don't know how far that means. I mean...
And the reason I ask is that, you know, we, we do have a list of legal reasons that we can deny, and of course, one of them would be if there had been a lot of incidents there, so that's the reason for my request. Thank you.
Counsel Hoyt, did you wanna?
Yeah, well...
Have some closing comments?
No, I think, um, for the same reason, um, that we generally consider the influx of traffic, um, pathway that children, um, come and what have you, so, um, that's how I feel about it, then I'm gonna vote my conviction. Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, any, anybody else want to speak? Everybody's good? Okay. All right, Madam Clark?
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed who made the motion, it's second.
Um, I'll make it again.
Okay. Second.
I'll second.
Counsel, President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counsel Hilliard?
Aye.
Counsel Hoyt?
No.
Counsel O'Quinn?
Aye.
Counsel Schmiderman?
Aye.
Counsel Williams?
Aye.
Counsel Woods?
Yes.
Counsel Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Aye, okay. That item passes. Next item.
Okay, the next item is, uh, ni- item number two, also on page two. A resolution relative to the application of Black One-Stop Shop LLC for a lounge retail liquor class two license to be used at Circle B One-Stop, fifteen fifty-seven Bessemer Road, Suite 102, Birmingham, in the hearing of our interested parties.
All right.
If I can get a motion in a second.
Move the item.
Tracking.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Adams, just when you thought you got to get out of here. Item number two is, I believe, the adjacent, uh, one is the address at one five five seven Bessemer Road, and one is the same address, one five five seven Bessemer Road, Suite 102. So this is, uh, again, Ms. Adams' item. Anybody have any other questions for Ms. Adams? Comments for Ms. Adams? All right, seeing none. President Parker?
Okay, all right, we're ready to vote. Madam Clark?
President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counsel Hilliard? Oh, I'm sorry, he's out. All right. Counsel Hoyt?
Uh, no.
Counsel O'Quinn?
Aye.
Counsel Schmiderman? Counsel Williams?
Aye.
Counsel Woods?
Yes.
Counsel Abbott?
Aye.
And President Parker?
Next item. Thank you. Next item.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The next item, we go over to page seventeen to item number fourteen. And item fourteen is an ordinance authorizing the mayor, the police chief, and the, the director of IMS to execute a management control agreement between the city and the Birmingham Emergency Communications District as required by the U.S. Department of Justice's Criminal Justice Information Services policy, covering the overall supervision of all Birmingham Police Department systems, applications, equipment, systems design, programming, and operational procedures associated with the development, implementation, and maintenance of any Birmingham Police Department system capable of accessing, transmitting, storing, and/or disseminating criminal justice information, including NCIC programs that may be subsequently designed and/or implemented within the Birmingham Police Department. And this is an item of, uh, permanent operation, so we need unanimous consent to take it to that. Take it up to that.
Motion for unanimous consent, second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, we're ready. Madam Clark?
Hold on one second for me, if you don't mind. Okay, now we can have, uh...
Mr. President, I move the item.
And Counsel Williams? Okay, the item is before you.
Okay, all right. Any questions or anything? Item, okay. All right, we're ready to vote. Madam Clark?
Okay. President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counsel Hoyt?
Uh, yes.
Counsel O'Quinn?
Yes.
Counsel Schmiderman?
Aye.
Counsel Williams?
Aye.
Counsel Woods?
Yes.
Counsel Abbott?
Aye.
And President Parker?
Aye, okay. That item passes. Next item, Madam Clark.
Okay, the next item. We will go over to, I think it's almost at the end. We will go to page twenty-seven. And that's item number fifty-seven. A resolution setting a public hearing on June twenty-third, twenty twenty, to consider, consider approving the designation and operation of the Avondale Entertainment District as authorized by Alabama Act number twenty-twelve dash four thirty-eight, as amended, and ordinance number thirteen dash one eighteen.
I move approval.
Second.
Ready for vote?
President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Is this what you said?
Let's just set in the hearing, so...
No, we're just set, this is, uh, an item. We're setting the, uh...
Public hearing.
Counsel Hoyt?
Yes.
Uh, Counsel O'Quinn?
Yes.
Counsel Schmiderman?
Aye.
Counsel Williams?
Aye.
Counsel Woods?
Yes.
Counsel Abbott?
Aye.
And President Parker?
Aye. Aye. All right, that item passes. Uh, next item, Madam Clark.
The next item is item number fifty-eight, also on, in page twenty-seven. A resolution setting a public hearing July seventh, twenty-twenty, to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC twenty nineteen dash zero 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 forty, to change zone district boundaries from C-two General Commercial District to Q-I-one Light Manufacturing District in order to allow a gravel parking area for storage of trailers and other equipment filed by Reliable Property Group LLC for the properties located at twenty-four oh nine Twentieth Street North, two thousand eight Twenty-Fourth Avenue North, twenty fifteen Twenty-Fourth Court North, twenty fourteen Twenty-Fourth Avenue North, twenty nineteen Twenty-Fourth Court North, and twenty-four fourteen Twenty-first Street North, and situated in the southwest quarter of section twenty-three Township Seventeen South Range, Greeworth, Birmingham.
Okay, y'all ready to vote, uh, their motion?
Move the item.
Second. President, President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counsel Hillier?
Aye.
Counsel Hoid?
Yes.
Counsel O'Quinn?
Yes.
Counsel Smithman?
Aye.
Counsel Williams?
Aye.
Counsel Woods?
Yes.
Counsel Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
I'm sorry, aye. Okay, all right, that item passes. Next item.
Item number fifteen, receiving the emergency purchase notice from the purchasing agent relative to the emergency relocation of the Confederate Monument located in Land Park for the purpose of historical preservation, and no action has to be taken on that.
Okay, all right, we have a couple more. The, uh, item sixty-two, the face covering?
Okay, item sixty-two on the addendum. An ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty dash sixty-nine as amended by ordinance number twenty seventy-two, ordinance number twenty seventy-six, ordinance number twenty, uh, eighty-three, and ordinance number twenty eighty-nine, requiring that face coverings or masks be worn in public in the city of Birmingham during the COVID-nineteen public health emergency and recovery. Also, let, please let me make a note on page two, on page two of the ordinance, there was a typo. It's the third paragraph from the bottom. Uh, there's a typo when it says where is on May fifth, twenty-twenty, the council adopted. Uh, it was a typo where, uh, ordinance number was placed in there twice. So, it should say adopted where is ordinance number twenty dash sixty-nine. So, there's just a slight typo right there. Just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay, all right, the item is before us.
And we also need to get unanimous consent on this item.
Why is that? Because it's an addendum item?
Well, we've just been doing that.
I'm sorry, it's an addendum item, though.
No, but we've been normally getting this item as a, just...
But we're treating it as an addendum now?
Yes.
Okay, we're treating it as an addendum.
It's only a addendum, so...
We don't need, okay, let's bring the item up.
But we've normally been doing it as if it were a permanent operation item.
It's not a permanent operation.
No, but we've historically been doing it just to cover your basis.
Okay.
I move for unanimous consent.
I move.
I mean, second.
I'm sorry.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I move the item.
Tracking.
All right, the item is before us now. Uh, this, Counsel Williams?
Sure, I think that this is absolutely ridiculous, um, that we're going to continue to mandate, um, our citizens wear face masks. I think we've heard overwhelmingly from the business community that if a business wants to, uh, require their patrons to wear a face mask, that they want the right to do so and not be told to do so. I think that, um, you know, after the World Health Organization came out yesterday with all of the findings that they came out with, and with what Dr. Mark Wilson presented to this very council, uh, last week, that we are, uh, letting facts get in the way of a good story. This, we, you know, it's time to let this expire. It's run its course. Um, the Health Department, you know, themselves have already, are already letting all of their restrictions expire here in this county and statewide. Uh, while we continue to be the holdout on this, I don't know. Um, the way that it's written makes absolutely no sense at all, considering the data that the health officer gave us last week and presented to this very body. Um, you know, we can say, we can, we can try to fear monger and, and, and strike fear all we want, but the truth is, is that if someone is not willing to wear a mask, imposing criminal fines against them, or having them, uh, be subject to police stop, is not going to help them wear a mask. It's, it's, so either people are going to wear a mask or they're not. So, I recommend that we approach through an educational way the importance of wearing a mask, specifically if, uh, you have any type of contact with somebody over the age of sixty-five, or have contact with somebody that works in, um, an assisted nursing or living facility. But for us to, um, uh, subject all of the citizens of Birmingham to, uh, enhanced, uh, interaction with law enforcement, as well as fines over a mask that has run its course, is absolutely ridiculous and asinine. That's all.
Okay, um, Counsel Hord?
Well, and I would think that it would be to the height of folly for us not to have the mask. It's black and brown people that are dying and are lumming weight. And here you are, suggesting that we don't need it. You're not a health professional, and if you heard Dr. Wilson last week, he said he would rather have the mask worn because it would minimize the spread of the disease. We know that. And I've heard the mayor say plenty times that he was not trying to be punitive, but the issue is to raise the awareness. I think the more people we have wearing the, it wasn't the restaurant doesn't dictate what, what we do, uh, um, with a health crisis. When do we start letting them to dictate to the city what we ought to be doing? What we ought to be doing is trying to save lives. We, we lose enough life in this city already, the gun violence, the oth- other things. And I'm, I'm really applaud, and, and, and really, um, a, a bit, uh, sideways that you would be so adamant about not wearing a mask. That concerns me. Concerns me greatly. And so, we go around, we just could continue to infect folk, and folk die. The numbers are going up. They're not going down. Based on what I've been getting, what everybody been getting, uh, through the via email, it's going up. Almost two hundred people died from, from last week, um, uh, from the week before to last week, what I read. So, it's not. And, and listen, and the issue for us is the fact that we have, uh, not tested, they've not had enough people tested, uh, they're as systematic. Okay? That's our challenge. And that, 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 that number is still small comparative to the overall population that we have, uh, not only in Birmingham, but with, notwithstanding, um, Jefferson County. And maybe that's, maybe that's just the way, uh, millennials are. You know, they just think they're invisible. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I won't, I won't do that. I won't categorize you because, uh, uh, you've been very conscious about this and others have too. But I just don't want us to be cavalier, you know? And I don't think it costs us anything to wear a mask. You know, and generally, when I go in the store and I've forgotten it, I go right back to the car, get my mask. But it needs to become a way of life. And we know, uh, we, uh, wearing a mask does save lives. We've seen that happen in other countries, you know? And so, uh, I just believe, um, I'm just concerned that you will be promoting that. And you represent, uh, black and brown folk in your district. And then you would come out and say, don't worry.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like, I'd like to respond, this was directed at me.
I've said what I need to say.
That was directed at me. Absolutely not. He said that there were two hundred new deaths over this COVID mask. And since the inception of COVID, there has been one hundred and ten deaths in Jefferson County, period. Not two hundred this week, one hundred and ten total, according to the Jefferson County Department of Health as of this morning. Then last week, our health officer testified that fifty percent of those one hundred and ten were in assisted living homes. So, let's not fear monger and say two hundred people died last week when the data is data. Can't, can't make it up.
All right. Okay, all right, any other comments? As a reminder, as a... Hold on, Counsel Hillier, I'll get to you. As a reminder, please direct all communications to the chair, please. We're all, okay? Counsel Williams?
We're good, and we're all colleagues and we're all friends.
Counsel Hord, we're good. Okay, Counsel Hillier?
And thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, uh, and thank you, uh, Councilman Hord. I think well spoken and well said. Uh, we have to take every opportunity to warn our community about the importance of wearing their mask. I don't care what anybody tells you. We know for a fact that it's greatly affecting the African-American community. Do you understand? Everybody knows that. That is not, that is nothing no one else has to tell us. We know who's affected. So, we know when we walk around, I'm protecting my eighty-year-old mother, I'm protecting my constituents. In the majority, my constituents are, are in their sixties and up. Now, it would be foolish for me not to want to protect the people that I represent. So, I don't need any numbers. I don't need anybody else to tell me anything. We know who's it affecting. Now, unfortunately, we're in a situation in America where we're, it's a two-headed sword. We have to keep the economy going so we can continue to keep our city moving, so that we don't have to lay off people, uh, or do anything like that. So, it would be better to practice safety in order to keep people working. So, that's very simple. So, what I ask all of us to do, don't worry about what any of your leaders are telling you. What I want you to understand is protect your own what? This is about self-preservation. It's about interests. So, nobody has to tell me as a black man, protecting a black woman, my mother, my daughter, my, my constituents, my neighborhood president, and the people that I represent. I want to encourage you and all of them, no matter what anybody tells you, I don't care what they say, look at them and put your mask on and keep it moving. Because at the end of the day, that's what's important. Now, people may come and express their opinions. A lot of times, they're expressing the opinion of the people that they think they represent. That they think they represent. But at the end of the day, the ballot box will tell you who you represent. Do you follow me? So, what I say is follow the numbers, follow the signs, follow what you know is right. Don't let anybody tell you that it doesn't, that, that black folks shouldn't be wearing, everybody should be wearing masks. But it, it affects the black community at an alarming rate. Would you not agree with that? You know that it's affecting our community at an alarming rate. Because guess what? Diabetes, health problems, the lack of grocery stores in our area, redlining, uh, the lack of economics, the lack of jobs. We last at everything because it's been a historically, it's been historically unfair to the African-American community. And frankly, I think after all of this marching is done, after everything is done, I still frankly think we're in a tough situation because we don't own nothing. We, we weren't given any land. We weren't given any reparations for the work that we've done over four hundred years. How are you gonna ever recruit? How can you compete with anybody that had a, a generation of education, knowledge, trust funds, insurance, good health, great food? We were given the worst of the worst that you can eat. How can we even start to compete with that? If they, if they freed you tomorrow and said, okay, here you go, no more racism, we all love each other, you don't have no money, you don't own no land? Are you free? You gotta work two and three jobs and then more. You know, I, I was riding my bike, and I hate to get on this show, but I was riding my bike the other day, and I was thinking, wow, this same house in Bush Hills is almost the same house in Homewood. And the difference between prices is almost unreal. In my neighborhood, the price of houses have gone down. After the tornado left there and swiped that, swiped us out, the same house has had the same value, uh, over the last thirty years. You take that house and put it in Chelsea, it has, it will triple va- va- in value. Does that make sense to you if you think about it? The banks, are they working for us globally? No, it had happened for us. In the ninety-nine neighborhoods, we broke. We health broke, we financially broke, we mentally broke. And the only way any of that is gonna ever change is we find a way to level the playing field. And yeah, I, I honestly feel like in my heart, I have some great, great, great white brothers and sisters. We talk all the time, and I love them. But until we get to the root of the problem, I'm sick all these marches we've been doing, and nothing has changed. So, Mr. President, I just want everybody in this room to be a committee of one and think about it. Economically wise, if we don't win, educational wise, if we don't win, health wise, if we don't win, we are old something. Land, real estate, stocks, education, it all should be given to black people, just like the other folks was giving. Hundreds of acres. Remember the Ponderosa? Paw? How much land we own Paw? As far as the eyes can see. I like to see that feeling. I like to see us get what we deserve. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, all right. Um, Counsel Hord, I know you're gonna close us out, and then we're gonna vote. Counsel Hord?
Okay.
Yeah, I just said you're gonna close us out.
Oh, okay, I didn't know. Yeah, well, let's, let's deal with logic. If our health officers are still testing... Now, they stop testing, then we would think that we beat this thing, right? They continue to test, and the fact of the matter that you may have more people exposed than you really know, but you won't know that until you test it. You understand what I'm saying? And, and everybody from the national to the local are saying there's gonna be another wave of this. But you don't wait till the house, uh, catch a fire and get a hosepipe. You kinda have the hosepipe connected, don't you? So, you're able to at least put, try to put it out. But if you're telling people to remove their mask, that's, 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 that's asinine. Yeah, I, it really is, and I'm really surprised.
Okay, all right.
Point of information, no one's telling anybody to remove masks.
You don't, you don't have to do point of information.
Let's just not make it criminal.
Okay, all right. To everyone, everybody, Counsel Williams here? You don't have to do point of information. You're free to, do you have any more comments?
Well, no, but if someone's alluding to the fact that anybody's saying, remove your mask, listen, be smart. Wear a mask. You know, people, people came to me saying that they were worried because they didn't want their child going into some place, and I don't remember what it was, where people weren't wearing a mask. Well, be a parent. Don't let your child go into that place. Why does it have to be an ordinance? You know? Don't, you know, if you, if you want to go into somewhere that, that requires masks, go to one of these grocery stores that require, or one of these businesses, there's lots of them, that require people to wear a mask for your safety and everybody else's. But let's not, let's not make a situation where we're gonna have, um, where we're going to, to make it a criminal offense. Mask helps reduce viral transmission from the person wearing the mask. I think that that's very well proven. But the question is, is should it be criminal throughout the entire city of Birmingham? And that's, that's the point. The point is not to, for everyone to, to take off the mask. The point is, let's not make it criminal. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, all right. With that, uh, we're ready to vote. Madam Clerk, on item sixty-two.
President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Council Hilliard?
Aye.
Council Hoard?
A resounding yes.
Council, uh... Council Smithman?
Aye.
Council Williams?
An emphatic no.
Council Woods? Council Abbott?
Point hold yes.
And President Parker?
Yes, okay. All right, the item passes. And it's extended through July third, twenty twenty. Okay, the item passes. All right, is that all of the items that before us, uh, we're gonna suspend the rules in here, uh, speakers, uh, I'm sorry.
Uh, I was given an item. I think it's supposed to be unanimous.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. That was one more. That was dealing with the, uh, meeting that we had scheduled. We have scheduled for June thirtieth at five thirty PM. I'm asking that we bring it back to nine thirty, in the sense in case we might have another state, we, we're not for sure. So let's just get it back to a nine thirty meeting. As we get back to the normal, the new normal, we will make sure we know we have, we owe the crossplex. And so we will, uh, look at finding dates where it might not be the fifth, you know, Tuesday of the month. We might, we'll just go and take a Tuesday, and then we'll just make it from a day meeting to a night meeting. So we know we have two to play catch-up on as we get ready, as we move forward towards the, uh, our new normal. And so we know, so then we can go back crossplex and then catch up on having night meetings. So, uh, just wanted to kind of bring that up. If everybody is good with that, um, Council Hoard, you're good with that? Okay, all right. So that's what the item is before us.
Okay, so I need, uh, motion for unanimous consent to consider.
I move for unanimous consent.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I move the item.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Now, according to the city clerk, uh, so there should be one more vote because the second vote you did was actually because it's an item of permanent operation, so we still have to get unanimous.
Okay, well, let's, let's.
So we need one more time.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I move for unanimous consent again.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Okay, and that basically, we're just making the June thirtieth meeting to be at nine thirty, uh, instead of the five thirty meeting. But as I said before, we will play catch-up as we move forward on having, uh, night meetings as part of, uh, the new normal, as we get back to some normalcy. So, okay, that item passes. Uh, all right, we're gonna suspend the rules. Uh, we have a couple of speakers. I think it was three of you all, I don't.
I need a motion and second.
A motion to suspend.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Good morning, how you doing? We'll give you three minutes each, and I think there were three of you, three speakers, so, yes, ma'am, good morning. You doing okay?
On the number six oh four, Fourth Avenue West, Birmingham, Alabama. I'm here on behalf of the people of Birmingham and the, those who are part of the Peacemaker Campaign. There's a couple of things we want to bring to the attention of the city council. We've, I heard your lament earlier today in regards to those who were killed inside of the city over the last few days. And I say to the city, we have been working nonstop to try to encourage the city of, of Birmingham to get street outreach workers on the ground to intercede in these situations. We've looked at your plans for interaction within the community, and they focus on re-entry and prevention, but there's no intervention. Those who are already caught in the cycle of violence have to have an opportunity to be brought out of the cycle of violence without having all of their dignity stripped away by going through the judicial system. Currently, we only have an opportunity for our people to get help from mental health issues to job insecurities, educational inadequacies, and it's through the prison system, and it's unfair. We're asking that the city of Birmingham look at your police budget and make a motion to move dollars from the fifty thousand dollars that's currently going into the community to about one point five million dollars into the community for programming to deal with our communities. Those who were killed in the last couple of days, we've asked the city of Birmingham to give to the families the victim response hotline. We have people trained in our city to respond to these families, but guess what? We can't get the city police to give the families the information because a third of all homicides in Birmingham are retaliatory, and most of the times it's from somebody within the family because you have a better chance of getting away, of taking care of justice on your own behalf than you do waiting on law enforcement to intercede on your behalf. We're talking about the issue of our people going into the city jail and not being given PPE. We offered to provide the city with PPE for every inmate inside of Birmingham City Jail, plus hand sanitizer, and we're yet to hear back from the mayor or the chief of police. The county already got four thousand masks from us and eight hundred bottles of hand sanitizer. It was not one dollar associated with us giving that. It was part of masks for the people, where we raised over a million dollars for people who are seventeen to thirty-four-year-old African American men and their families who are disproportionately affected by the gun violence, the COVID nineteen, and police brutality. I'm not gonna continue to say that we haven't been working, and it's unfair for this council or the city elected officials to say the community isn't working. The problem is, we're not getting a valid response back from those who are elected in these positions. I promise you, in every breath in my body, when it's time for election time, we will have the scorecard available for those who are voting. And we will be encouraging people to vote accordingly, not based off of what we say, but based off of what your actions are. I'm making sure I stay, and so I'm through. That's my three minutes.
Yes, ma'am, okay. Well, I was gonna let them all speak, and then ask, or you wanna just do it? Okay.
Are you gonna remember?
All right, now, come on now. Good morning, how you doing, sir?
Good morning. Thank y'all for having me. I hope y'all can hear a little bit of democracy outside your windows. Been rattling them, the people chanting outside. My name is Robert Rosenkranz. I'm a medical student at UAB. And the thing that they're saying is defund the police. I don't know if y'all could hear the words that were coming out of their mouths for the last hour. Um, and I'd like to just tell y'all a little bit more about what we mean when we say that. In my first year of medical school, I met a thirty-eight-year-old black man with end-stage kidney disease. He was diabetic and had experienced chronic homelessness. It was a critical barrier to his access to insulin, the insulin he needed to stay healthy. There is almost no chance he is alive right now. But if he survived, there's a good probability he was crammed into a jail cell in the last week by the Birmingham City Police. And if that occurred, if he was put in that cage where there are no social distancing rules and no hand-washing recommendations applied, if he survived until then, he will likely be dead within the next few weeks from COVID nineteen. Medical professionals see and mourn the structural causes of health inequities, but we are socialized to think they are inevitable, and the complex distant forces are outside of our control. I personally became curious about these forces and looked up the Birmingham budget that was proposed for fiscal year twenty twenty last year. I was, uh, struck by the observation that the Birmingham City Police ammunition budget was listed at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a tiny fragment of the ninety-two million that was proposed for the Birmingham City Police, but certainly much more than the few nonprofit social services we fund at fifty thousand dollars. That's a ratio of two thousand to one, just approximately. I'd like to just remind y'all that a bullet can only do one thing. I don't wanna pay for bullets anymore. I don't wanna pay for homeless people to be caged. I wanna pay for health, the robust health which is derivative of systemic justice. We know that police contact degrades the mental health of young black men. We know the mental health impact of police killings is equivalent to that of diabetes, which is a disease with a threefold increased probability of comorbid depression. We know that cities investing in upstream determinants of health have seen five percent of their obese population become normal weight again. Typical weight again. This is precisely one of the pre-existing conditions that makes black people more vulnerable to death from COVID nineteen. There is a dense and redundant network of harm, but there are equally rich possibilities for change. So what we are asking you, all those medical students out there right now, the ones that can't speak right now, we're asking you, please, defund the police, take a small fragment of their enormous budget, and do something for the health of our communities right now. I don't know how much time I have left, but I wanna also make sure that I have a moment to speak for my friend Justin Bailey, who didn't have an opportunity to. Uh, he's a third-year medical student at UAB, and he has serious concerns with these budgets. What he wants to communicate is that he, as a black man in medicine, was specifically uplifted by the kinds of social services that we are not funding. We are funding bullets and not the kind of social services that put a good man like Justin sponsoring health fairs in his church, active in the Student National Medical Association. I can't speak enough, I don't have time enough to speak about what a good man Justin is. But he is here, he is at UAB because of the social services that don't exist anymore. We want an opportunity for, for people like Justin and for our community.
Is Justin here?
Oh, all right.
Yeah, come on up, Justin. I thought you were one of the, I saw you earlier. I thought you were gonna be one. You nodded, yeah, you nodded your head. No, that's why, he nodded his head, so I thought he was one of them anyway. How you doing? And then we'll, we'll come to you. Yes, ma'am. You doing all right?
Yes, sir, I'm doing fine.
Good.
As Rob, uh, maniacally pointed out, I am Justin Bailey. He said a lot of nice words, I don't even know are true, but they're absolutely right when it comes to these social services. Um, ten years ago, I was a kid growing up, um, no health workers in my, um, family. Nobody were doctors, nobody was lawyers, nobody was even nurses. I didn't know these were possibilities. My dad washed cars, my mom was a car salesman. And what I remember is going into these programs at the Birmingham Regional Empowerment Center, a program that this council funds, seeing other doctors, seeing these scientists, seeing these people and saying, hey, I can do that. I can be that person, and I can have that potential. And because y'all invested in me then, I'm here now. Because y'all chose to fund books and education over a bullet that could end my life, I'm here today. If we keep investing in ammunition, if we keep investing in strong arms with the police, then it's just gonna be a downward spiral. The more we invest in lethal action, the more lethal action you're gonna have to take. Your budget next year may have to be two hundred thousand dollars to continue to put down black men. It may go up the next year, but if you stop now, if you can defund now and take all that money, just a fraction of it, we're not going for salaries, we don't wanna go for the fitness instruction that the police gets, we just want you to take some of those bullets and put it towards us. Invest in us, invest in our future, and we'll pay it back to all of you. Thank you, guys.
Hold on before we speak, because I, because I want you to come up and I, and I, listen, I, we get it. If we can meet later, and I think it's, I think it's the group.
Me, him, and about fifty others outside.
Okay, we'll figure out how to have a meeting. If we need to do it, if we need to convene a meeting, have it in Legion Field, I mean, you know, we'll, we'll figure out how to, we're gonna figure out how to meet. So let's, after the meeting, let's exchange communication. Let's figure out how to meet. I'm gonna come to you, Council Hilliard, just a second, but I just wanna let you know.
Okay.
We're, we're gonna figure out how to meet and, uh, work through things. As, as relates, as, as relates to the speaking and all of that, uh, but so I just wanted to point that out to you, okay?
So I have a quick question for him, just to, just before you guys leave.
I was gonna, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, Council Williams, Council Williams, hold on. I've, just like Council Hilliard, I was gonna let all of them speak, and then we come back and we ask questions.
Yeah.
Okay, so you can finish up, and then we'll call up the young lady here. Let them all speak, and then we'll take questions like that. If you'll, that was the protocol we set out. You work with us.
That was the, um, the last couple of things I was gonna say. I was hearing the councils meeting earlier. Each council person saying, how can we fix this? How can we stop this? And that is the answer. You invest in your youth, you invest in us, and then we can take this burden, and we can fix it together. It's enough time for just saying, okay, we need to enforce more laws. We need to make some more people that uphold the laws, and we need to make more people that can give young men like me, give young men that are younger than me a way out and a future towards this, rather than showing them only a jail cell or the bottom of a boot. Thank you, Council.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we'll, we definitely will be talking. No, no, you've, no, 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 we're, yes, ma'am, come on up. After, um, after you speak, then we'll, we'll exchange communication, and we'll all, he's got his number. Good morning, how you doing?
Hi, my name is Tora Dudley. Um, you guys may. You guys may recognize my face. I was on the news a couple of days because I got arrested at one of our peaceful protests. I am from Birmingham, Alabama, and I represent the youth Black Lives Matter that is out there, and I've helped organize several of these protests, peaceful protests. And I'm also here with DJ Curry, who represents, um, Alabama Rally Against Injustice. So along with what my fellow people are saying about the treatment within, um, the jails with coronavirus, our masks were dirty, the cells were absolutely disgusting, we weren't allowed to stay six feet apart. There was no social distancing at all. So the treatment of protesters in general was absolutely terrible, let alone the, like, besides coronavirus. And along with what they were saying with defunding the police, um, reallocating resources, I also just wanted to ask if there was something that you guys are doing, like Minneapolis, um, with reallocating resources to social workers, um, doing things for mental health. Because while I was in jail, there was a man who was very clearly mentally ill, and the police were just antagonizing him. And there, he needed to be in a rehabilitation center, not in a jail cell, and he was clearly in distress. Um, so I think that's another good point to make, that maybe if we got a committee together and had a lot of people with, um, just different fields of study, to see if we can find a solution, see if we could reallocate these resources to, um, maybe social workers, find someone else to call when there is someone mentally ill, instead of just the police, find a different type of response team. Um, and then for also the protesters, um, I'd like to ask, when are we gonna get our park back? When are the roads gonna stop being blocked off? I had my car trapped here, and I was just feeding the homeless.
You, I can hear you said your, which park?
Uh, Lynn Park. It's still being blocked off. I couldn't get back in to get my car, and I was just feeding the homeless the other day.
Your car is, your car was impounded?
Yeah, it was over here. It's been blocked off, and, um, we just want our park back open, and we were just peacefully protesting. And I think with the, the curfew is over now. Um, and I wanted to talk about the charges that me and my other peaceful protesters, um, had. So we were charged with breaking curfew, but there were many bars and local restaurants that were open and no's getting taken in. And within the jail, I saw only black people being taken in for curfew. So I think the charges against my peaceful protesters were unright, unjust, and there were people walking on the street, white people just walking on the street, fine, and not getting charged with anything. So I think that either needs to be a discussion that's had against the charges for us, or the police need to just have a talking to, because it's completely unjust that we were, um, treated that way. Also what they said about being homeless people being taken to jail, um, because they live in Lynn Park. There are people now living on the streets because Lynn Park is their home, and now it's completely blocked off. And when I was going around feeding the homeless people the other day, it, it was just completely sad that they're literally just sitting on the sides of buildings.
We just wanna make sure we.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
Words.
Yeah, um, it was ridiculous that they couldn't get back into the park and into the gazebo where they, um, are underneath the gazebo, like, for rain and stuff like that. And the fact that they're being arrested because they don't have a home is ridiculous. And again, a different response team for that, I think, would be better.
Okay, um, while I, I think Council Hilliard, and then Council Williams, and I'm sure Council Hoard gonna have comments, we'll exchange, I'll come over, exchange communication, and then we will, uh, set up something.
Okay, thank you.
And go from there, okay. All right, Council Hilliard first, and then Council Williams and. You don't need one, sir. You just, you wanna take the one behind you?
You was that preacher voice.
Hello, yes, there we go. Uh, I think the young man was, was it Justin, the young medicals? Could you come back up to the podium, please? Thank you. First of all, I wanna say to Black Lives Matters, to all of our a- our activists that's been going, great job. You've been doing an excellent job of representing the people, and, uh, it just brings back a lot of memories. Uh, what year of medical student are you?
I'm a rising fourth year, so this will be my last.
A rising fourth year. Where did you do your undergrad?
Birmingham Southern College.
You did it at Birmingham Southern College. How many African American males in medical school view?
Uh, my class specifically, around sixteen, um, altogether, maybe.
Sixteen black. Sixteen black males?
Around sixty, but that is only because the school has been doing a push to get more underrepresented.
How many medical students are there in all?
A hundred eighty-six, uh, times four classes.
So about sixteen black males out of a hundred and.
No, there's sixteen in one class.
And one, black males in one class?
But before my class got there, the largest black class to that date, the class before me had three black people, no black males, the class before that had around five.
Right.
So this is just changing with what the culture.
Right, that's a beautiful thing. I'm, I'm glad to hear that, and you are, what, what medical school are you in?
U A B.
You're in U A B, so there's a push to get more African-American males in.
Correct.
That is very good. I, I'm glad to hear that, because I've been down this road before too. I tried to get a young man who had graduated from Ramsey High School. He went on to Xavier, uh, and from Xavier, he went to Wayne State. But after he had left Xavier, he wanted to come back to Birmingham to go to medical school, because he didn't have to pay that out-of-state fee, and his dad had retired from V A, and he could go home. But was not able to get into U A B medical school. So therefore, he had to go on and get his masters, which he achieved that from Alabama State University. Then he went to Wayne State, and went to Wayne State and finished, but you know the debt that he incurred? You know, it was a couple of hundred thousand dollars, you know? And then, so over the course of that, he ended up with about a three hundred thousand dollar debt bill. That's the way he came out of medical school. You understand where I'm going?
Yes, sir.
So, so, so my whole thought is that, it's, it's a problem with me when you, you don't get enough young males or females that look like you. So when you come out of med school, fortunately, you won't have to be, hopefully you don't have to be in no three hundred thousand dollars worth of debt for a profession that you want to do, you know? Because see, that's what I'm saying, that's how come we've been behind as African-Americans. Are you following me?
Yes, and I can speak to that as well, and I'll say his name, cause he tells this story all the time. Another one of my black classmates, Jared, um, used to be a football player, um, Division One, wanted to go to med school, and he encountered with so many, especially black males, fine, when they try to apply to law school and med school. They go to their counselors and say, I want to do this, and they shut them down there and there. And said, you can't do this, it costs too much, they won't give them the resources. Where all of his other friends will get resources, he won't get those same resources. And despite all those hurdles, despite all that, he still gets in.
Right.
And that is the book that we have to fight, with not just med school, but all kind of black.
Well, I want you to understand this. The battle don't stop when you graduate with that medical degree. Because see, you going into an industry that's controlled by insurance company, big businesses. And, and this is to all of the ones of you who came up here, and I know what you want, because it's a national thing to defund the police, put more money out there. But you also have a responsibility on some of these corporations and companies. I've not once heard anybody talk about that. These corporations and companies have huge and large, well, some of you all have mentioned, but, but you know what I'm saying. Some of these corporations have huge budgets, have made hundreds of millions of dollars off of trading us on the NASDAQ, in the NFL, M B A, Hollywood, all types of things going on. We have generated so much money, we like an oil well, we just keep putting in the fuel and keep burning it. And you now, a, a rising fourth-year black medical student, who's about to go out into the real world, the real world, uh, and I can tell you only this, cause I, I talked to my, my buddies as a physician now, it's, you still have hurdles to cause. You'll see people come in, they get better bonuses than you do, they get better opportunities, and now you go right back in the world, you get married, you have a child, you get a house, and next thing you know, you got a, a huge debt to pay off, you got kids in private school, you stressed. Now, cause you see, oh man, I'd have spent all these years in medical school, that ain't stealing, it's not, uh, cause now you need to go make extra money. But you tired from being in the hospital all day. So now you gotta figure that out. You understand what I'm telling you?
Yes, sir.
So I'm with Councilman Parker, I do want to have a conversation with you and your group at, at another time to talk about this. And the only other thing, I wanted to make sure that you all were representing the crowd that was outside, is that the case? These are your friends out there, so that they know that you had an opportunity to speak. They know because of COVID that everybody couldn't pack in this room. That's very important, that you understand. It's our responsibility to advocate, to legislate, and listen to what you have to say. But now because of the Mayor-Council Act, we can't abolish an apartment. Do you, you follow what I'm saying? We don't have the power on this council to get rid of any department, do you hear that? The last mayor took care of that and took those powers from the council. So I want you to understand what we can do.
And that's what our response is, we're not asking for a complete abolishment of any department. What we're asking for is funds allocated to ammunition.
But you are aware, you are aware, that because of the pandemic, that the city has lost a tremendous amount of money from businesses. Are you aware of that?
And if we do not take this time now to be a leader in the South and America, to show that we are gonna start funding in our social services, in our poorest communities, in our people of color, then we're just gonna hit the same demographic freefall that we've been doing for years and years. We have this opportunity now to invest in each other, so we don't have these demographics to where COVID's hitting black and brown communities as often.
I like the way you're thinking, Justin, you're gonna be a great leader. Thank you so much, and thank you to you and your friends. May God bless you, and I look forward to talking to all of you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is gonna be an ongoing conversation, so I just want everybody to know, this is gonna be an ongoing conversation. Uh, and I think we'll be able to, to, uh, to all be.
Reach out to my staff.
Alright, Council Williams?
Yeah, I was, what I was just gonna ask earlier is if the, um, the, the two ladies and two gentlemen that have, have spoken today, if y'all have, uh, I know this might have gone on longer than you thought, but if you have an extra few minutes after this meeting, I would love to speak with, with you, you guys respectively, um, altogether, um, or separate, if that, whatever y'all feel. Um, but if y'all have a minute to stick around, I'd love to speak to you. If not, I understand, and we'll figure out another time, but I would love to speak to y'all.
And, and, and what we can do, cause I know everybody wants to talk, is probably, uh, at our, we'll have a committee, a whole meeting, uh, probably early next week, that we would have you all a part of that agenda. We'll, we'll work through it. We're gonna work through, but everyone, I want everyone to have individual conversations, but we will, we will work through, uh, making sure we can all communicate, okay? And find some happy medians on a lot of stuff, so I think that'll be. Yes, ma'am, uh, do you have anything, Council Hoyt, I'm sure you have a few things to say?
Don't be sure, just.
No, I, I'm, I'm, I'm very, very, uh, you know, bring it on home to us, sir.
I'm concerned, and, and, and I want to say, um, Doctor, give me your first name, come back up to the, to the, uh, podium. I appreciate, uh, what you said. And your approach is something that we need to consider. And I say that because two months ago, I tried to encourage the mayor and this council that we need to put more money towards social services. I said, because you're gonna have more folks drinking, you're gonna be, they're gonna be using drugs more, and then you got a pandemic that we don't know is, and perhaps in perpetuity, in terms of, you know, uh, of, of, of us solving or coming up with a cure. You know, we don't know that just yet, we working on it. And, um, and so I think it's important for a person like you in the medical field, who understand that, um, that, that medicine plays a, an integral part of a person's life. And, um, mental health is one of those things that I thought we should have put more money towards, you know? And, uh, that was three hundred thousand dollars, I think you could start just in the overall budget. Now, I, I don't believe that we need to defund the police department, but as you say, I don't think we need to spend a hundred fifty dollars on ammunition. Uh, but then I don't want them to be out, out ammunition, you know, on the streets fighting crime. Uh, but then there are other ways. You know, we had a budget that dictate that we do, uh, three hundred thousand dollars for, for something, uh, for rehab, and I'm saying, people, uh, in a pandemic, they, uh, uh, anxious and what have you, and quite frankly, nobody's gonna let you in their yard, let alone in their house, to do anything because of what has, uh, transpired. And I thought that money should have been realigned, and they know this, cause all of them heard me say this. And it's still an opportunity, cause we have not passed the budget, to try to realign some dollars towards social services, uh, because many of these, um, facilities are in our, tucked in our neighborhood, these rehab places, what have you. People can walk and get counseling, walk and get treatment, and things of that nature. Uh, and so I just really appreciate you and your colleagues coming, and, um, you are making a difference. And I saw what you all did the other day in taking a knee. And, um, and I would tell you that, uh, I can say this emphatically, that the attendance of African-Americans in, in the medical school has increased because of a gentleman and his staff by the name of Dr. Vickers.
Absolutely.
The dean, that has been his thrust. I heard him speak about three years, about four years ago, and he made a presentation that there's a correlation in terms of, uh, uh, how you treat, and that the patient and the doctor look, uh, alike, and to just to, uh, deal with barriers that may, um, um, may occur and what have you. And so, uh, so we are proud of what he's doing, and, uh, and I, I'd give this, uh, what is it called, this shout-out. Uh, he just happened to be my cousin, so I just want you to know. Uh, but he, but in spite of that, he's done an outstanding job, and I think most of us know that, and have a lot of respect for what he's trying to do. And, uh, and you gotta give Dr. Watts some credit too, because he hired him, and she, he chose him as the dean, so, uh, we, uh, appreciate that as well, so, um, keep up what you're doing, we hear you. I just hope that those who, of us who make the decision, go back and sit down and go through this budget like it ought to need, need to go through, and deal with line item by line item, and so that we can go back and, and extract some of these dollars and to put them towards social services, because it does make a difference. You know, the Boy Scout got an explorers program, they learn science, they learn math, and all this other stuff. That's what we got to do, and you had to get it early on, you know? And we don't want to perpetuate, um, what we've seen, uh, happen in, in this country too often, you know? But we have an opportunity to change it, so I appreciate you coming today, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyt, and, and if I might, just very briefly say, the reason people speak to, to defunding the police, the reason so many people are chanting that out there, understanding very clearly what you said about your, uh, legal capacity to abolish a department, but the reason people speak to defunding the police is because they absorb such an outsized amount of money, and what we hope for them to do is to decrease harm, right, the category of harm that we call crime.
Right.
But there are so many categories of harm in our communities. And in fact, we know that police sometimes produce harm, right? That is not a, a statement against any individual officer in Birmingham, but we know that being stopped and frisked degrades the mental health of a young black man. That when you randomly telephone survey young black men, you find like seventy percent of them have had such an experience, right? That is a harm, a concrete harm. And so, that's kind of where that, and that, uh, listen, I'm a good medical student, I'll provide y'all all the citations. I'll get the papers to your mailbox, I promise you that. Um, but we know these things, that, that harm is being produced. And so it's a question of both producing benefit by funding social services and detracting from harm. That's really, I think, what I, I just wanted to communicate that more clearly. And thank y'all so much for your attention and time there.
We, we hear you, we're good. Um, we will see you all, I mean, I, I know we'll see you all and talk to you all, uh, not late today, tomorrow, as your group, but also you will be a part of the conversations we move forward, and the whole, um, process. So, we will see you all again. Very, okay, very, very brief, okay?
We're still trying to get P P E into the city jail. We have the, we have the items, but we have not been given permission by the city of Birmingham to deliver the items over to those who are incarcerated at Birmingham City Jail. And that's a real problem when we're talking about COVID-19 and who's in there. There are African-American men and women mostly in that jail. And so, we can't stress enough how we've been advocating. And then the other thing is about the victim response teams. Our families who are suffering from the tragedies in our city, they should have the support of their community. And when they don't know where to turn to, because no one in the city is giving them any directions, it puts more of a burden on the community and what these families are having to deal with. The service is there, there are people in the community trained, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Our, here's what, here's what we're gonna.
Yeah, Mr. President, and I think she makes a valid point, and you should have a champion up here, because we have a public safety, uh, uh, committee, and we should be advocating for that, um, for you, because if it's not costing the city anything, why don't we have the man stand? That's just, that's just a little right.
So what I was about to say is, is that, um, I guess officially reach out to the police chief, if not, uh.
On May, um, on May twenty-second, that reach was made out to, not only to the mayor, but, uh, to the police department.
Okay, if you could provide that information to, uh, Council Williams and to all of us, but Council Williams, yeah, he's, he chairs public safety, I suppose, and so I think if you, uh, could communicate with the Council Williams, I think we'll be able to try to assist you with everything, okay? Alright, thank you, alright, we're going to, any other comments, any other announcements we need to make today? Everybody's, everybody's good on announcements?
I do have one announcement.
Okay, we'll start with you, President Protim Alexander, yes ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to announce, uh, on behalf of the First Baptist Church of Roosevelt, they are hosting a food box drive-through at sixty-twelve Malcolm Avenue, that's in Roosevelt City, and that's Wednesday, June tenth, at eleven A M, and, uh, we do have a number that I will post, two oh five, four two eight, sixty seventy, where if you have any questions, but again, that's Wednesday, June tenth. Also want to just know that as we have been dealing with the restrictions for meetings, uh, as relates to social distancing, and the number of, um, large gatherings that we can have, I do have some neighborhoods that have been very ingenious in how to still have an opportunity to meet and discuss items relative to their neighborhoods. So I do just want to announce that the East Brownsville neighborhood, they will have a conference call this evening at five thirty. And I'll post these numbers on the District Seven website, uh, where you could call in and you can participate and speak with the neighborhood president and those members there. And then at six o'clock P M. this evening as well, the Riley Trevallik neighborhood will also be hosting a, um, conference call meeting. The last month, the one by Riley Trevallik, it was actually a good meeting. So, thank you to these neighborhood leaders that are still trying to get out and have that opportunity, and I'll be joining in with them on that call. And again, we continue to pray, um, as I asked for earlier, for sympathy for Mr. Alexander, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President Protim. Council Hillier, we'll start and just go this way.
Yes, sir, thank, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we will have our town hall meeting tonight at seven thirty. Uh, it'll be District Nine time, uh, we do have, uh, a guest will be, Sheriff Pettaway will be our, our guest speaker, along with several other, uh, updates on things that's been happening in District Nine. I want to thank all of my neighborhood presidents and leaders. We have averaged between ninety and about a hundred and, uh, forty-five calls. Uh, that's been excellent, and they've been standing steady, so we've had some great speakers. Uh, I believe on Wednesday, uh, I think it starts at ten, if I'm not mistaken, there'll be another food giveaway out at the, uh, 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 sixteen hundred, uh, Avenue K in Enslie. There'll be testing, there'll be, uh, uh, testing at the, uh, Enslie First Baptist Church in Enslie in the parking lot, so you'll be able to get food from the C M E Church and, uh, and the Farmers Food Market will be out, uh, uh, giving away food on that grant. So there'll be food and testing given out, there'll be a little over, uh, twenty-five hundred gallons of milk, about, uh, uh, three thousand boxes of fresh fruits and vegetables. So we're asking everybody to come out on Wednesday, we're excited about it, and let's keep Birmingham moving, and, uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Doctor Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have had a number of, of neighborhoods, uh, who have transitioned from in-person meetings to online meetings, and, uh, just want to let folks know who, who haven't made that transition yet, that, um, we are here to, to help you figure that out. And, you know, our, our neighborhood leadership is incredibly important to us as, uh, a council and, and the mayor's office as well. You are our boots on the ground, and we cannot be everywhere all the time, so, um. and we cannot be everywhere all the time. So um it's really important, your role is really important. And part of the how that happens is those regular interactions with residents at at those monthly meetings. So uh please let us know if you need any assistance in um making that happen or or any other uh technical assistance, um Everbridge, calling post, all of those are options for communications with your residents in your community. So uh we're here here to help with that. Uh otherwise, I just want to uh remind the council that we have a regularly scheduled education committee meeting next Monday at noon. Um the the agenda has yet to be determined. Thank you.
Okay. Real quick, you're um President Protem Alexander, if you could communicate that um your food giveaway, I think we captured Mr. Hilliard's. Um, and so, so that number one, as we do testing, we're also going to have a calendar, a community calendar for the healthy foods as well. Both of those are part of that new normal on how we flatten the curve. Uh and so um it's tomorrow. If we can make sure that we communicate to your your district on that.
I will do. It's actually being sponsored by the First Baptist Church of Roosevelt. So I'll be sure to make that announcement.
And we'll, and we'll ask, um.
Thank you.
Minister Kidd and Deputy uh Director McDaniels to get the PIO team so we can target communication this evening to District Seven, also District Nine, uh in what you're doing, as well as with the testing sites. Um, and and Council Hoyer, I know you've talked about it, what we've been able to do is kind of start capturing a calendar for not only testing, but also healthy, the the giveaways for the food. So we want to have a a dual approach. Uh, some of them are are, they're not squeaking bosom, I think, it's only three or four different groups, whether that's Kahaba Medical or or um um, you know, Arms, which is in North Birmingham or 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 Christ Center. So we're going to get them back together and say, hey, can you, when you're, we want to be proactive. So when you start looking at those areas, we need to capture that at least a week or two in advance. So we're going to do a better job of capturing them early and not, so we can have like a week's lag time before, you know, give people about a week to know about those pop-up testing sites. So we're, we're working to streamline it. We're not there yet, but we're close. And the same thing with the healthy food. So we want to, we want to promote both components as well simultaneously. So give us a couple of more days. Think we're getting close, but we've just got to have another round of conversations with everybody. But we want to promote both and we'll ask that, I know there's some, uh there's one coming up on Friday uh in Council Woods District. So we would ask that um at least on Thursday that we send out communication to Everbridge to to residents in those areas. Uh, and also I think next week at Sixth Avenue, there's going to be a testing. So uh we want to make sure that we're very proactive. I think tomorrow, Faith Chapel as well, Council Hilliard uh has a testing. So um, you know, we still have Legion Field, we still have UAB on the South Side, but we want to make sure now it's important to have the testing sites, but testing sites without proper communication uh in a in a timely manner does not allow for maximum participation by the residents in all ninety-nine neighborhoods. So we've got a little bit more tweaking to do. We're working with the Health Department, so we're working through uh to get it tweaked to where we can have it uh seamless as we move forward. So we know about it in enough time, communicate it out, then de- then deploy the resources to make sure there's over-communicate to all the residents. So just wanted to let you know we're, we're getting there. So just wanted to report back to you from last week uh that we are getting close. So you have comments? Council Abbott, uh one more thing. You are going to have another Budget and Finance meeting next week for the item regarding, give an update on the uh this current year's budget, if you could call that for early next week.
Yeah, we, we need to, the three committee members need to get together and make sure that we can all be there on the same day. And aside from that, but.
You let all of us know about it so we can come back and have that meeting.
Yeah, definitely.
To support you. Okay.
We don't want people coming to a meeting and finding there's nothing to hear.
I I understand. So, but if you could just let us know once you find that date to make sure it's amenable to.
Definitely, definitely.
Okay, with that.
Because we, you know, everybody had questions and just mailing your questions isn't the same as everyone being able to, you know, interact with one another. So and also since I'm talking, I would like to say that the Highland Park neighborhood meeting is having their neighborhood meeting via Zoom tonight. And they have been the most creative neighborhood that we have in District Three as far as continuing to have their meetings without getting close to each other. Um, so it's, it's been really good. They've been very effective and tonight is their Zoom meeting. So, thank you.
All right. Yes, ma'am. Council Hoyer, you good?
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. President. Um, certainly wanted to uh thank um the Danin Project. Uh, we had a giveaway last Wednesday and gave out uh a thousand boxes uh to folk and and we had to get them out. And so we all got on social media and tried to get folk to come out. And then here comes the First Lady of uh of uh of the Fifth District, uh Ms. Cat- uh Katrina, am I saying that right?
Christina.
Christina, Christina, Christina uh O'Quinn came down and she said, I help. And she pulled over and put all these boxes in her in her van and trotted them on to the folk that she needed to help. So I, you know, when people do that, that's really, really wonderful. We had a good time doing it. My feet was hurt when I got home, uh because I had been on my feet about seven or eight hours straight. Uh, but we were uh determined to get that out. And so I want to say kudos to the Danin Project, Ms. Carrie Pruitt, uh who made that possible for us to be there. And we just got on the street corners pulling folk over. Some folk didn't, didn't want it. Said, no, uh can I give you a donation? No, no, we giving it away. And uh and so I finally convinced even the folk who didn't want one. I said, well, you go home, make a smoothie. And so that resonated with them and they said, okay. And uh but we really appreciate uh the people and their responses and uh the staff there at the Danin Project, because we all got in knee-deep and uh decided this is what we would do and unloaded at that place. And uh so I want to say um thank you and thank you to the First Lady of the uh of the Fifth District of the City Council. I mean, she was just wonderful and I just appreciate that.
All right, we're going to let Dr. Quinn have a response today.
Council Hoyer, I just want to thank you for waving Christina down and and encouraging her to to come over and and get some of that. Um, I, we actually got help from uh Ms. Wilma Davis in Gate City and also uh Ms. Barbara Merchant, who's the resident council president at uh Harris Homes in in uh Oak Ridge Park. And uh so actually, there were so much food in each one of those boxes, you know, for a senior citizen, it's it's almost too much. So what Ms. Merchant and Ms. Davis did was they actually separated it out to smaller quantities. So it went out to a number of households over uh in Gate City and Oak Ridge Park. Thank you.
Absolutely. I want to commend my colleague, because I've been picking bagging off of his boxes for the last two weeks and will be there tomorrow. Uh, my folk will be there uh getting forty boxes to take back to the church in Adamsville to give out. And so uh we appreciate that. You and Troy Johnson and our elder has been uh stickler for us, you know, pastors to uh to feed the folk. And so uh we really appreciate that you've done a yokeless job with that.
That's what I want.
And I kind of figured out, my wife said, John, keep calling our house. And so, and so, so she said, this is not a, this, then we figured out my aunt who lives in Ina Ridge now lives with us. We forwarded her phone because we just kept thinking, we getting these calls from from John. But I also want to mention this, uh we don't have enough folk being called. Now, I thought the reason why we brought the Everbridge program particularly because what we're trying to do is our response to this pandemic. So we should be able to call every household, you know, and so uh we need to revisit that. And because right now, you know, only going out to two thousand people, well, we got uh we uh Samarina got twenty-three thousand people in the in the district, but only going out to certain folk. Now, when we do the emergency thing, it goes out to every home. And so regardless of where they opt in or not. So uh we need to uh look at increasing that number so that we can get more folk out to take advantage of these uh of these uh health uh issues and, you know, get tested as well as some of these uh.
The healthy, healthy food, yeah.
Food choices, yeah.
We're good with that.
I want to think, I want to think, Mr. President, if you'll mind, one second. Hooper City, we did one at Hooper City on Saturday. So I want to thank uh the neighborhood president out in the Hooper City area. Also Bishop Bass did something at his church.
I was about to give a shout out. Yeah, that's, yeah. Yeah. No, no, go ahead.
Okay, yes, I wanted to give him a shout out for just being uh right on time, him and his organization and just saying that uh also uh uh Councilwoman Crystal Smithman came out. I know she's left, but she came out with the uh NAACP and did a voters registration uh 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 event while we were doing the food give out. So I wanted to recognize her for that, but I say this to the council. You know, I know we get up and have differences of opinions sometimes, but you all are are heartwarming, loving group of people who really have the true interest of the people that we represent. And I really appreciate that. So I know you'll come when you can. People say we're part-time, but you all, we know we work twenty-four hours a day. It never stops, you know, from the minute we get home. But I enjoy what we do because we get an opportunity to serve at every level. So thank you, Mr. President. And you've been doing an excellent job, Mr. President. President Parker, you have been pulling us aside, keeping us informed, keeping connections. You work around the clock. I do worry about you as a friend, not just as a colleague, because I I tell you, don't work too hard. You work so hard until uh and people don't see that, but you almost here twenty-four hours a day. And uh and we want to make sure that your health uh stays intact to keep it moving. Thank you, Mr. President.
My last comment, Mr. President.
All right, come on, then we're going to make a motion to adjourn and close us out.
I want to thank the nursing program at the Danin because they took in blood pressures and things of that when people came in. And so they did a great.